All right, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's time to call our meeting to order. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
A special session is being held on Thursday, January 30th, 2014, at 5:00 PM in the Commission Chambers for a CMIP update and new requests, followed by discussion on community planning and long-range plans. Roll call. Townsend.
Here.
McKernan.
Here.
Mugia.
Here.
Maddox.
Here.
Kane. Markley.
Here.
Walters. Philbrook.
Here.
Walker. Holland.
Here. All right, I want to thank everyone for coming. This is our 5:00 special session. And following through our calendar, I would just reference again the Commission meeting schedule calendar that outlines the dates and the topics that we're covering to keep the budget calendar moving forward. We have two documents. One is the meeting schedule. The other is the 2014 Calendar for Budget Adoption that the Commission adopted in October, which calls for this accelerated program in terms of talking about it. So typically, we talk about CMIP in June. And we back that up actually to May of last year. And with the Commission adopting the new budget, it's backed it up to now, which is in January, to give us the most opportunity to review how we want to evaluate it. So I'm going to turn it over to Administrator Hayes for further introduction, and then we'll move forward with the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, before we proceed with budget issues and the CMIP, I'd like to make a brief personnel announcement. As you see on the calendar for first quarter, February 27th, scheduled to have a discussion regarding the permanent Commission Liaison position. So that is set, and that will occur in February. In the meantime, I'm pleased to announce that we had a number of good candidates apply for the interim position of Commission Liaison. And I wanted to inform the Commission tonight that Emmerich Cross will serve in the role as interim Commission Liaison for the next six-month period. So Emmerich, if you'd like to stand. I know the Commissioners believe all know you. Emmerich, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for accepting this position. As you know, Emmerich has other duties in the unified government. We will be beefing up support for him in his other activities that is also a full-time job. Emmerich's agreed to work above and beyond the call of duty. So don't hesitate to call him just any time. And on a serious note, Emmerich will be contacting each of you next week, and will be meeting with you to determine what your specific needs are and specific requests from a staffing perspective are. He will be in this building as much time as possible. He will also be maintaining parking and transit issues and continuing to serve in a oversight role. And we'll have an interim step-up in that area. I'll be announcing that shortly. So Emmerich, thank you for being willing. This is going to be an interesting tour of duty, Mr. Walker. We know that on February 27th, there will be a discussion regarding the permanent selection and how the Commission wishes to proceed with this position in the long run. So thank you, Mayor, Commissioners.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Cross. Appreciate your willingness to do that. And I would encourage, as the Commission is visiting with Emmerich in the coming days and weeks, to be framing some conversation around what long-term staffing for the Commission might look like in that dialogue. So I would encourage that dialogue with Mr. Cross as we move forward for the next, that'll be in about 30 days. So that should give plenty of time for that conversation.
With that, Mayor, we have staff presentation in a few moments. But Mayor had asked that we just go over the calendar again and how these pieces are fitting together. As you know, there's a calendar for the first quarter. There's a listing for those topics in second quarter. We're working with the Mayor's Office on trying to come up with potential dates for the items for second quarter. But tonight, we're focusing on preparation for the March 8 Strategic Planning Session. That's reflected on both the documents. That's Saturday, March 8. The Commission had agreed to hold the Strategic Planning Session with a primary focus on the financial issues and the 2015 budget. We call your attention to the process that you've already entered into, the citizen survey activities. You have your first public hearing that will occur next week. Also next week, in the 5:00, the public hearing is being held at 7:00 PM here in the Commission Chambers. There were forums out for individuals having ideas and wanting to come forward. Those have been distributed or are available on our website. We also have at that next Thursday evening, the finance staff, led by our CFO, Lou Levin, will be giving you a preliminary end-of-the-year report for 2013. That's information that normally comes to you later. So we wanted to get that to you early in terms of the end-of-the-year projections. These will not be audited. These will not be final numbers. But it will be, we believe, good information to help you in your preparation for budget. Then, as we proceed through the month of February, February 13, that will be the Jail Population Control Meeting, scheduled from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM on that evening, Mayor. And I did have opportunity to visit with the Sheriff today in preparation for that, and have suggested to the Sheriff, and he's going to share with other members of that committee, that really what the Commission, I think, would be looking for are solutions to reducing costs in terms of operating the jail and overtime. And the Sheriff was pleased, and will be prepared with the Jail Pop Committee to come in and offer recommendations, short-term and long-term, in terms of how to deal with that. And also, he pointed out to me, and just to preface, we have a lot of our deputies who are working 12-hour days in an effort to try and reduce the workload for the individual deputies and reduce overtime. Sheriff will be addressing that as well. So that's a highlight of what's near on the Commission calendar with the Strategic Planning Session scheduled for, again, March 8. And it's staff's hope, with this investment that the Commission's making and the investment that the staff's making this early, is that we will get guidance and direction from that session on March 8 that will put us in a strong position to put together and finalize the Commission's budget priorities later that month. So you're on schedule. You're on track. I will point out to you that there have been a lot of long staff hours and continue to be. But if it comes as promised, Mayor, and we get direction from the Commission early through this process, I think it will reduce everyone's workload this summer dramatically.
All right, Commissioner Kane.
Thank you, Mayor. Dennis, do we have a full load for next week as far as the full Commission? Because if we do, then I'd rather start at 6 than 7.
We're talking...
For February 6.
On the 6th. That is a regular Commission meeting. We do have the public hearing scheduled at your 7:00 PM meeting. And the initial topics, discussion about open data, as well as end-of-the-year numbers. So we had assumed that would be two hours, but that's a discretion of the Mayor.
I think that's going to be a long meeting. I just anticipate the 5:00 session and then coming down for a public hearing. I think there's going to be a good turnout for that. And we published it at 7:00. So I wouldn't want to necessarily move it. One thing, too, that I will also have for next week, I'm meeting with our consultant that I'm working with on the selection for the Administrator position. I'm meeting with him next week, and I'll have a complete update, I'm meeting with him tomorrow, and I have a complete update for you next Thursday for the Commission and for the public in terms of where we're moving with that and how that process is unfolding. And I think you'll be interested in that as well. So that will be next week also. All right.
That takes us to this evening's presentations, Mayor. And call forward our Deputy Administrator Doug Bach. Once again, we're trying to get as much information to the Commission as possible. These are not decision-making sessions. As you recall from the radio session a couple of weeks ago, we were trying to share information with you, put you in a position of knowledge and information so that when it comes time to be making decisions in the coming months, you'll hopefully have all the critical information before you from prior sessions. Mr. Bach.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes, Mayor, Commission. And as I start out, I would say, you know, we're down in the chambers now, but these are sessions we do around the roundtable. So if you have interaction, questions as I go along, or any of the staff members as we present, please let us know, and we can go through it. So we kind of keep it in that format. I think it's more beneficial for us and for you as we go through and as we do this. And I don't want it to just be real formal in the way we just get this out to you. As Mr. Hayes said, what we're talking about tonight is really working toward that strategy session in March and taking the overall look at a few things that we really haven't taken as much time to look at in advance of coming up on them. And tonight's session is really where we at as far as our revenue that we've put into CMIP and other major projects that are out there for us. And then keeping our eye on what those CMIP projects are and major projects. And our intention tonight is not really to walk through each of the CMIPs. In fact, we're just going out for our updated request to departments in February, where we get all their renewed requests. But we will give you an updated packet that gives you information about major projects that are out there on the list of things that were worked, that have been, that are initiatives, that are kind of coming through from departments that are saying, hey, these are big areas we've got to get into. Or, and of course, the CMIP stuff that's already out there for five years. And all of you will recall, if you look back to it, we build our budget to get to where we were in '13 and '14. But our years '15, '16, '17 still had higher amounts of requests on them than what we were able to, than what we've been funding annually. And those are things we just want to continue to think about. So I think that the first slide really gets us to the point of thinking about what happened over years. And we put this back in perspective. And I think this helps you by looking back and understanding why we have such a crunch on our departments today when they're saying, this is the level of revenues we were operating at for a number of years. And then when we hit the recession, we continued to cut everything back. You'll note in the year 2007...
One second, can we get this slide on camera, please, so we can, so the public can see this presentation? Thank you.
You'll note on the, the blue slide is our CMIP for capital, which is funded by cash. And then the green slide is our capital debt. And in 2007, you know, we were at a level around $23 million where we were putting money from cash into our CMIP area. And this includes equipment. Many of the maintenance items are still counted in this area that were going on, that we were going through on an annual basis. The immediate impact on us when we hit the recession that came in, property values came in, and we had the strain that came on us right away, caused us to start taking money out of cash to move that over, really over to our employee side to maintain our workforce. And we were able to go through all this. And we didn't have cutbacks, layoffs, and such like through this as we went through all this time period. But it put a big strain on us from a cash perspective as we dropped down to the level of $10 million in 2009. And we've stayed at that level going forward. Then our adjustment on the debt side, and you see it kind of swayed a little bit in that line as we went through the years 8, 9, 10, and 11. Well, what we did initially, as we came back in those years, as we moved from cash to pushing a few more of our items into debt that we had cash funded. So debt didn't grow any, but it was absorbing more items to try to continue us through these years. And then we've got down to this level of about $13 million on our debt. And that's where we've stayed. So if you look at it this year, you know, we're at about $23 million, which is about $20 million short, or lower. I shouldn't say short, but lower than where we were, you know, in '07 and 2008. Well, you can accumulate, if you think $20 million a year, we had to push that out. And that just kind of kept going each year. So when we, when we have departments come to us and say, boy, I need this many trucks, or this, this much equipment going on, and we have Public Works coming in saying, here's the roads and such that we're trying to get to, well, that's because we are operating from a CMIP level at about half the level of what we were as a community. And that's just, and the corresponding line that's not here in front of you is, you know, as we were moving through the end of the '07, '08, and '09, our personnel costs were still moving up until we controlled those. And then we went into 0% increases for a number of years and started to reduce some personnel. But as you know, as we went through and looked at what a 1% COLA does to us, and then if you go up to a 3% or 4% COLA, and that happens a couple of years, it doesn't take long to eat up $6, $8 million a year, and then you're up higher than that. And that's kind of what happened as we went through '07 and '08 and '09 as we had some outstanding contracts. And we worked through that and managed the budget to get to where we are today. But as we now, as you all are face this, and I have to look to you and say, it's really great on your part to look forward and say, how do we manage our budget? Say, we're going to make this work today, and look forward at all the demands that are on us. Because you'll see in some of the sheets that we'll hand out to you that are coming from departments, and I know you've all asked to look at these in more detail. What are the departments seeking? I mean, we have a, we have a major request list that is probably $15 to $20 million, new items. And this isn't really addressing your things. These are just things from departments saying, we need to get this built into our budget, or we can't function. And these are, we get these every year. And we whittle them back, build in somehow, figure out things that we have to do before we present the budget, you know, that tries to go without any increase each year as we manage through this. So this is kind of, this is that global look to give you an understanding of why we see the pressures in our community of saying, why can't we get all this CMIP stuff done like we used to? Well, we're not allocating as much money to it. But that's a decision we want to weigh out as we go forward. I'm going to have, unless there's questions on this, which take at any time, or as you think I'm through this, I'm going to have Debbie, or Lou Levin's going to come up now and talk a little bit about our debt position and where we are with this. And then we'll move into some of the major project list.
Mayor Commissioners, Doug referred to that I was going to speak about our debt position. And I'll do, I'll do it a little bit indirectly. But really, my focus is going to be on our bond ratings. And as you, as you might remember, next week, we have a major bond sale and temporary note sale as our annual financing. And in advance of that sale, we had two credit calls this week with our rating agencies, Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. Mayor Holland participated in those calls. And there was a significant amount of staff effort in preparation and of material that, in advance of those calls. Both Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's in the last year have adopted a very structured rating system. And what I mean by, they, they look at numbers, whether they're financial numbers, economic numbers, and they compare our scores with other communities, and they establish a rating. There is some part of the rating that's qualitative, meaning their understanding or their belief as it relates more to management and local economy. But when they get into looking at finances and some debt obligation, pension obligations, it's very structured, and they look at our financial statements, and they establish a score for our community, which is relative to other communities. Our current bond rating is AA by Standard &amp; Poor's and AA minus, or at a slightly lower rating by Moody's. What you see on the slide are the different percentages that each of the agencies applied to developing the rating score. Actually, there's a great deal of similarity between the two. Some slight differences where, on the management side, Standard &amp; Poor's gives a higher percentage score, whereas Moody's gives, puts a little more weight on the debt and pension obligations of the government. Just a little bit, I'll go briefly over some of the components that make up the scores. On the economic side, they look at tax base. And when they say tax base, they look, what is our overall property value on a per capita basis? They look at trends in that property, assess valuation over time. Income would be per capita income, employment, employment growth over time. Management, and when I talk about decision-making, they're looking at what does the government do or what is its willingness to do to keep it financially stable? Are we willing to implement tax increases if necessary? Are we willing to reduce expenditures? It's, what steps has the government taken in the current year, recent year, just to, I'll say, balance its financial condition? The policies that we recently developed are examined by, by the rating agencies also. Institution is simply, they look at what location the entity is located in. And so we're located in the state of Kansas, and we receive a score that all entities in Kansas receive. And I think there's, different states, the local governments have different levels of authority. And so that's, that percentage is based on that. Finances and, when we get into finances and debt and pension, they're, they're looking at really numbers that, that exist in our CAFR, which is our annual financial report. Fund balances, they focus on real closely. We, our call with Moody's, we had a two-hour call. And I would, I would guess about, almost a little over a third to a half of that call focused on what are our fund balances? What is our trend in our fund balances over time? Why have they declined? Do we have any expectation of growth? And a real strong focus on fund balances. Cash liquidity, meaning, is, is real simple. What are our balances in our bank accounts? Do we have the ability to, if there are shortages of revenue, do we have money that we can address that with? And do we have money that we can move to, for responding to, I'll say, emergencies? The last category, debt and pension obligations. Debt, debt is looked at real closely, more so by Moody's. And they calculate debt ratios, meaning, what is our debt per, on a per capita basis compared to other communities? Kansas City, Kansas, Wyandotte County, we have a relatively higher debt ratio than other communities. And so that, that would negatively affect our rating. And so I think a long-term objective, certainly of the government, is to lower that debt ratio over time. Pension liability, not only does that, do they look at what, what CAPR's cost expenses are, but they, what other liabilities we have? We have, for example, long-term health liability for employees that have retired and receive healthcare benefits from the government. So that would be included in the pension liabilities. We'll get reports in, in advance of the bond sale from each of those companies. We may receive them tomorrow. They'll, either tomorrow or Monday, they'll give us the opportunity to review it. I, after, we'll, we'll see what they end up doing. I know Moody's seem to express a high level of concern about our current fund balance situation and our, our overall debt. I think both, both firms believed our economic situation with the growth that's occurring in the community and, and the management decisions, both the governing body and staff has taken, they are viewed positively. But anyways, we'll see what our overall results are next week. Even if we fall, I think I mentioned we're at the AA level. If we were to fall to the A category, we're still at a, that's still considered a high level of a bond rating for an entity. However, our interest expenses would increase with the issuance of debt. Can you answer any questions?
Do you, I have a quick question. Do you have, well, I know you had, you do. I'd be interested, as we move forward on this, this budget early on, to have clearly stated fund balance goals that you have. And I know I've seen those before from your office, and debt ratio goals. And what it would take through this budget, you know, over five and 10 years to get to where we want to be with each of those? Because I think setting some of those goals, as we look at our expenditures, it'd be helpful to see a plan that, you know, if we, if we fund it this year, then we would be closer to our goal. Because our debt ratio and our fund balances are not going to be fixed, as it were, overnight. We're not going to be able to do it in one budget session. But I would be, I would like to see that consideration presented to the Commission for this budget. for this budget time, so we can at least have an idea of what kind of dollars we're looking at, what kind of financial commitment we're looking at to get to the levels that would keep our debt, would keep our bond rating as high as possible? Because there's a great expense to us when we lose our bond rating. And so, if you could just clarify those for us, I would appreciate that.
Will do. Thank you.
We have another question. Commissioner Murgia.
Thanks, Mayor. Lou, you talked about, and I know you understand all the terminology that you use, but some of us that don't use it every day don't necessarily catch it first time around. So I know you said that the Bond Council had expressed some concerns about our fund balance and our debt, but more concern in regard to the trend of our fund balance and the trend of our debt, is that accurate?
Yeah, and what I meant by that, in terms of trend, they look at it over a multiple number of years. And so, in 2011 and 2012, we actually increased our fund balance each of those two years. In the general fund, we increased it by two million in 2011 and five million in 2012, very positive. And our estimates that will go into next week, we're projecting a decrease in our fund balance in 2013, and our 2014 budget also has a decrease in the fund balance. So over time, they, and they tend to look a little more closely, what are you doing today? They viewed what we did positively, several, two and three years ago viewed that positively, but then they say, well, you've had a negative performance last year. On paper, you're projecting a negative performance this year, and that raises a level of concern for them.
So, I'm impressed that all that is in your head, but I can't see that. And so, what I would like to see is what the Bond Council is, our Bond Council is looking at, which is, what is the trend of our fund balance? What has been the trend over the last, I don't know what is a reasonable amount of time, eight years, 10 years? Is that difficult, since you're discussing it? I'm assuming it's not difficult to send to the commission.
That's correct. We'll have a table that will summarize the most recent years, certainly.
A table or something with number? I mean, are you talking a table with numbers, or are you talking more of a visual that will show the trend? More of a chart that will show the trend?
Well, we can present it a couple of different ways, if you have a specific preference. I know I'll definitely have a table. It would be similar to, if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we had a table projecting tax requirements for the county bond and interest fund. And we showed a beginning fund balance and an ending fund balance each year, and what we would need in revenue to compensate for increasing expenditures in the future. And so, we've had tables like that over time, and we can go back a number of years, and we certainly, we could put, summarize some of that in a graphic comparison, if you believe that would be more useful to you.
Yeah, I just want it the easiest way possible.
Okay.
If they want, if the rest of the commission wants it complicated, feel free to pass it on to them that way. But I want it very easy to read, either in some sort of visual graphic is what I would prefer, but if people want specific numbers, I would take that as well. And the same with the trend of our debt, over, you know, whatever that is, eight to 10 years. And this is just a question, since there's only so many ways that government brings money in, is there a direct correlation with our debt and our fund balance and our property tax delinquencies?
Well, property tax delinquencies would represent a revenue that's not collected, and if it were to collected, if it were to be collected, it would improve fund balance. So there's certainly some correlation there. You know, we collect probably over, close to 93% of the taxes we levied, and then in addition, we put a strong effort on collecting delinquent taxes, and so. But any tax revenue source that we do not collect reduces fund balance.
So the increase in debt, and the increase in debt over years, and sort of the challenge with the fund balance, I'm trying to make sense of that. Would be, the problems with that and the trend with that, are you saying is a result of we are not growing our tax base as fast as there's an increase in the cost to provide these services in general?
I think we've seen, not only, we've actually been able to reduce some of our capital-related expenditures, and the slide Mr. Bach reviewed previously showed that reduction. Our longer-term debt, we've had an increase in our long-term debt, but our annual payments towards that debt have only increased marginally. I think it's other areas of our operating costs that have been a challenge to us, as well as just some of the revenues that we've lost since the onset of the recession.
Mr. Hayes, do you want to jump in?
If I may, just for Commissioner Murgia and the other commissioners, everything we're talking about tonight is contained in the annual budget. And each year, we talk in detail about the annual fund balance, and we focus on that. So, the information Lou's speaking of tonight is the historical data and information we present every year. We just thought it was good, with the bond rating calls occurring this week, for Lou to update you, so that we know how outsiders are viewing our finances, and putting us then in the strongest position to provide you good policymaking information for your session in March.
Well, and I think it's relevant tonight on our CMIP, because as we look at, we're doing about half the amount of CMIP we used to do, and that includes less debt-funded projects and less of our cash-funded projects. So if we think we're doing about half as much, one way to do it, you can spend more cash, but our fund level is low, and we could borrow more money, but our debt level is high. So as we talk about the, it's important to frame these two topics in the context of the CMIP discussion we're having tonight. The other thing I would recommend, and I've implored everyone at the end of the last budget session, to hold on to your fat budget notebook, because that handy three-inch binder has all of these charts and graphs in it, because we have our debt fund, and it's the one that has multiple layers on it. And we have the trends for our cash balances, we have those charts as well. All of that information was updated and accurate as of last, just six months ago. And so, it's still good information, and the most important thing I think we can do for this budget is to spend our time, particularly now, is before our strategic plan, is taking the effort to dive into that more, to understand it. And if we have questions on that, getting our head around that budget, I would encourage us to reach out to Mr. Cross, who's the new liaison, and I'm sure he would be glad to help set that up so that you could walk through it. But, let's not wait to get our head around the budget, that we all agree that three weeks was too short a time to get your head around a $290 million budget. But we had, we have a whole year, and so we have several months. So I encourage you to please dig out that folder and review it, just to refresh our minds as we move into this budget session. All right? Thank you, Mr. Levin.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Mr. Hayes. As Doug mentioned earlier, I'm gonna go through some of the major funding issues that are going to be affecting our budget this, possibly in the current year, as well as in future years. Some of these issues are capital, as well as operating issues that will be affected. The first one I'm gonna talk about is the transit funding. This will continue to be an issue. Federal funding has decreased for transit, and with the need and request for services increasing, we will be, need to be looking at how to fund those increases that are not covered under the grants. This could include funding for new routes or the need for larger buses. Future impact for conceal and carry, that issue's not set yet, but we anticipate that there will probably be some additional security costs related to UG buildings that probably will be coming to us in the near future. Funding needs for buildings. Maintenance on a lot of our city and county buildings has been delayed, and investing in roof repairs and HVAC repairs is something that's needed to ensure the use of our buildings. We have, in the past couple of years, had some emergencies occur where we have had some systems break down, and we've had to dig into our reserves in order to pay for those emergencies. Document storage, the need to retain city and county documents. Currently, we use storage at both the Health Department and the public levy. The Health Department site is full, and with the development of the public levy, we will need to look for an alternate site for storage in those areas. So that's something that will probably be coming to you. Fire and water pollution, sewer maintenance facilities. Both of these departments have funding in the budget for these facilities. So we are, they're looking to proceed in the near future, possibly in the next few months, with the planning and designing to occur. Mark, federal aid project. Public Works has brought, I believe, a grant application to the Public Works Standing Committee, and they're looking to submit applications for these grants in March. These will affect projects that could occur in the years 2017 and 2018. Inmate housing cost. This is when we farm out prisoners to other facilities, when we've either reached capacity at our facility, or for some reason are unable to keep them in our facility. The 2013 budget was 2.4 million, and the farm-out cost exceeded that budget this year. Our 2014 budget is the same as the 2013 budget, so that's definitely something we're gonna have to address as we go through the amended budget process. We've also had federal and state funding decreases. We already mentioned that transit has lost some of its grant funding. We've also had community development, over the past several years, has lost as much as 20% of their grants, and those costs have to be picked up by the unified government. Radio system issues. Couple of weeks ago, we had, at a public session, we talked about the emergency radio system, and how we're gonna have to look at the, how the debt payments are gonna affect the county debt service fund, as well as ongoing operations, ongoing costs for operation of the system once it's up and running. Litigation funds, these are legal fees that our legal department incurs for litigation. The 2013 fees exceeded their budget, and the 2014 budget is reduced, was reduced and is less than the 2013 budget. So that's an item that we will have to address when we go into the amended budget. And the 3-1-1 operations, the original concept for this 3-1-1 system that was approved has not really been realized. We still need to make some significant upgrades to the system. We do have funding in the current budget for some of these upgrades, but we don't have enough to implement a full upgrade of the system. So that's another item that will probably be coming to you. Unless, if anyone has any questions on any of these items, these are not all the items. I think Doug had mentioned, we are gonna have a list for you to be passed out later that will include a bunch of items that the department submitted. This is just a portion of those lists, there is a more extended list. But if there are any questions on any of these. If not, I'll turn it over to Rob Richardson for community planning.
Mayor Commissioners, Mr. Hayes, good evening. One thing, before I start my presentation, I will let you know that our electronic plan review is on track, and we have our first submissions coming in, I believe, last week. That'll be fully into the electronic submission process. So folks will be almost out of the paper, and as we move throughout the year, more and more departments will be going to that, getting a BPU and fire, and some of those folks online with our system will be delayed. But I think by July or so, we ought to have everybody into the electronic plan review system, and that's going forward, and I think staff's eager to do that, and we look forward to the time savings on our end, and for the consultants and the developers on that side as well. Well, due to budget constraints that you've obviously just been hearing about, we haven't done a lot of community planning over the last five or six years. We had funding in 2008 to finish the citywide master plan, and since that time, we haven't done very much. We have a little bit of money in the planning budget that we've been saving for, you know, if we had an emergency economic development project, we needed planning funds or something for, and typically, those funds have just rolled over, and we haven't used those. However, recently, I've had folks that sit behind the dais with you ask for planning funds and how to do planning projects. We've had folks in the community asking for planning projects. And so, I thought it was important for you all to see the vast variety of those that are out there and kind of on the table, so to speak, and how much those might cost, and seek direction from you all as to where we ought to move as far as community planning projects in 2014 and beyond. So, these are some of the, the first slide is some of the requests that I've had, and I've just put some, the numbers there are basic, just a guess from Rob, basically, of how much those things might cost. And I would tell you that about 50% of that cost is purely public involvement, so that our citizens have the opportunity to be engaged in these processes. Public involvement in the planning world is absolutely essential and very expensive. And so, when we go into planning projects in a neighborhood, we want all the neighbors to be involved, we want them to have several opportunities to be heard, to have their input put into the planning process, and hopefully have a project that the neighborhood and the community are proud of when they come out of that. So that's kind of a list there that you see, from the healthy campus downtown, working more along Leavenworth Road to document the good work that Dr. Philbrook has started. I know there's folks interested in the K-32 corridor, Fairfax Industrial Association, Central Industrial District, Central Avenue, Strawberry Hill Historic Phase Two. We started, as you'll recall, I believe, two years ago, we did a historic survey for what I would call the northern half of Strawberry Hill. We did not complete, that study's not been completed for the southern half of Strawberry Hill. There's many folks there that would like that to be a historic district. There are other needs, and this is kind of on the list of things the planning staff have had on our list for some time. Actually, one of them is new. The first one, KU Med is planning basically a 3 million square foot expansion north of 39th Street. That comes with significant impacts to our community, and especially our street network. And I think that it would be prudent to do some planning work now, so that we can proactively respond to how the KU Med is gonna change over the next 20 or 30 years versus waiting and reacting. The northeast portion of our community is one of the areas identified in our citywide master plan, is needing more specific and detailed planning. I know Commissioner Townsend has mentioned this to me, and I would agree. It's basically in the urban redevelopment designation of the citywide master plan, but we have not done anything detailed as far as how to really reinvigorate and get the northeast portion of the community going. The Armoredale Plan is from the 70s, and when we did the citywide master plan, the community of Armoredale said, we really don't want to update our plan. But I will tell you that when we have issues in Armoredale, the plan is not very helpful. The people that live in Armoredale want to stay there, want to live there, but the property is cheap and ripe for industrial intrusion to the residential neighborhoods, which creates residential living issues. And I don't think the plan is adequately covering those issues, and I think we need to address those head-on, and so that the business community and the residences have a clear idea of how we will address those issues in the future. We had a very critical incident with an oil remanufacturing firm that moved in and started making neighbors sick. Luckily, they moved out on their own, and we didn't have to take any action related to that. But those are issues I don't want to repeat, because some of those industrial intrusions are very hard to see the ramifications. A lot of our code... A lot of our code is, is fairly old. Our administrative procedures for our code were redone in the mid-two thousands, but the bulk of the zoning regulations themselves are from the seventies and early eighties. Uh, the zoning subdivision code, um, that would be expensive. The sign code is antiquated, um, and it's parts of it, uh, we haven't really enforced since I've been here because they may or may not be constitutional. And that is a project that I would say, if we move forward with a sign project, I would like to see a consultant who has written and defended sign codes in this century, in the last ten years, that, um, because it is a very complicated process. You could go to the National Planning Conference, and just about every hour of sessions, there's going to be something on signs, and it's a very difficult and convoluted process, and, uh, we would really need expert opinion on that because you can get somebody to write you a constitutional sign code, and it'll be this thick. All right? Our sign code right now is about six or eight pages, and we have trouble understanding that. So we need somebody that has the skill to write a brief, understandable, constitutional sign code that works for our community. That person is not going to be very easy to find. We also have road classifications in the zoning code and public works manuals that don't agree with each other, um, and are quite frankly, old and outdated, and we need to bring the master plan and our zoning codes together on road classification. It affects how much land folks dedicate when they do new subdivisions. There's also, beyond this list, there's a lot of things in the citywide down- and downtown master plans that would be implementation measures that we haven't been able to act on. When this whole, uh, thing started, we had two more staff in the planning department, and I will tell you that just in dollar figures, we're doing twice the amount of dollar business and development that we did when we had two other staff members, and we've filled that with a part-time intern. So, um, we're keeping up, we're, you know, I think we're doing a pretty decent job of keeping up phone calls and emails and keeping the, the churn going, you know, so that every month, when we have a planning and zoning meeting like we do later this evening, you have high-quality, uh, professional staff reports for, to assist you in your decision-making. So on the issues, I, the first one's really not an issue, it's just the types of plans, and so you could get a perspective of planning. The broad plans or the master plans, the area plan like Armoredale or Northeast or Downtown would be what I would call an area plan. If you're going to do something within one of those plan areas within a few blocks, I would call that more of an implementation plan. Um, and most of our necessary work is really in that implementation planning. We have areas where we have strategic needs that we need to focus on and, um, move those through the process. I will tell you, though, that we can do all this planning, but if we don't have somebody that can stay on top of that and move those things forward in time and not just let those plans sit on the shelf, we're going to be doing that for naught. And we've been doing our best to piece that together over the last five years. When I was a long-range planning manager in Independence, I had five people working in long-range planning. Now, we did a little bit more than long-range planning, but as a scope of a similar city and a similar size and what it takes to really move plans forward, we are way behind in that. And the last issue is really prioritization. Time and funding are limited. We need your directions, uh, and, and guidance in this. Perhaps we should put some of these forward as CMIP projects and let them be vetted in the budget, or, um, maybe work with, uh, Mr. Hayes and Mr. Cross and give me some more direction on which ones of these are the critical items to move forward. But I will tell you that, once this discussion starts, the other issue is that, in prioritization is that I probably haven't identified everything that's on the list that you all or your constituents have. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you. I, I think this is very important because there's been several i- items that have come up for planning, and his, in my time here in the last seven years, we've not put, we've not, in our CMIP projects, we've not put planning dollars in there very frequently. And so I think having this scope of what kind of plans are out there and what might be needed for them, um, and then the capacity issues that you spoke about in terms of having our planning and zoning group move it forward, um, is very important. I will also say, from the, um, Healthy Campus Master Plan, looking at eighty thousand dollars that RFP went out, um, I believe that we've been able to cover the entirety of that eighty thousand dollars with grant funding. So, um, very pleased with that. So, but not every plan that we do, I don't know that anybody's going to give us a grant to do a new sign ordinance, right? So where we can get grants, we need to go after those grants. Where we can't get grants, we have to put them into our CMIP. So having this list, and if we can get copies of that for the commission, um, I really appreciate your listing those out so we can have kind of a dollar figure assigned to them, and then we can start prioritizing which ones of those we want to move forward. The other beauty of a plan is let's not plan for something we're not ready to implement. Otherwise, we're just going to spend the money by the time five years later we're ready to implement it, or ten years, the plan needs to be reworked. So, um, but anyway, I appreciate your putting these forward. So as we're talking about the projects that we have in our own districts, and you might remember too, with the CNIP funding, one of the core components to the CNIP funding was fifty thousand dollars for the planning to go in and engineering to make that plan a possibility. And so that was an important part of the CNIP planning, um, that was built into that cost. So, um, anyway, I really appreciate your putting this together. I'm also interested in long-term planning. A lot of city departments have a long-term planning, and do, we do not have a person dedicated to long-term planning right now?
No, that's my, that's my weekend and evening job.
That's your weekend and evening job? That's outstanding. Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Richardson? Okay, thank you.
Um, now we're going to give to you, I think, and it's what you just requested too, the copy of the stuff that's in the PowerPoint there, that so it has that list of the projects. But there, and we'll send you this electronic too, because I know some of you prefer to have it that way in the future. But there's the list of your capital projects that are in here, and this listing of, uh, major projects that kind of goes beyond where Debbie had mentioned as she walked through that list of all of them. Um, give you a couple of minutes to maybe flip through these and see if there's anything that kind of jumps out at you that you're thinking about from a, a question perspective, but you see this major projects list that's toward the back of it, and it goes in with each of the departments kind of going through, and they state their detail or questions they may have about, or issues that they set out. And there's not numbers tied to each of those as we go through them, and as I said, this is kind of, as we start our budget process, we start getting into various things like this, so that gives you a perspective of which ones of these are critical for you to get into, you know, or you see as high priorities as, as we start building the budget and moving toward March.
Are we done with the slides for this evening?
Yes, we are.
Can we have some light on the dais, please, so we can see this better? Just asking. The dais, where we're sitting? I want you to be able to see your paper, Mr. Kane.
Switch back.
I need both. I need light and glasses. Well, thanks, it wasn't, that's what we have, so there's our lighting. Okay.
Should be able to get those track lights on. Oh, okay.
We're warming up.
That is the slideshow, and that's the presentation of material we had, and if there's questions you have about what we handed you or any of the other information that's come out tonight, then, um, uh, staff's here, ready to go through what we can.
Um, Mr. Hayes, and then I'll come to Mr. McKernan.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi. I just wanted to go to the material that Doug was speaking of. In past years, I know those commissioners that have been here for a while, uh, sometimes raise the question, well, gee, we didn't know those departments were requesting those items. So this year, because of your commitment for additional time and budget, you have that package. You have what we're hearing directly from the departments now. That's new and that's different. Normally, we would cull that as a staff, and in the administrator's budget, then we would present to you a balanced budget of recommendations. This year is different. You're seeing it all as it comes to us. We've met with departments, we've asked departments, tell us what your key issues are. So contained in the package that we just gave you and that will be emailed to you later tonight are all of those discussion points we're hearing from the departments. So this is really an all-inclusive exercise. Uh, you ask to be involved in the budget, and this is the opportunity to see the requests that are coming in, because I know many-